Okay, good evening, everyone. Uh, interest the time. I'd like to go ahead and get started here and call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, May sixth, two thousand twenty-five. The town now time now is seven eleven P M. Like we begin with the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no end, just as far.
Okay. Thanks, folks are starting to jump in. And, uh, just for the recordings, we understand we had some technical difficulties, got started late. And, uh, I think some folks are still trying to get in, so we'll we'll move along. Uh, first off, any public comments? Now, I'll call again for public comments when we have everybody out there just to make sure they have opportunity. Um, correspondence, uh, we have two items. First, we have a letter from Chief McAllister of the Bethel Fire Department. Um, he was asking for a special meeting, um, at the uh, Attorney Vision Commission, which just happened, by the way, and the chief and some of the Fire Department folks were there. We also have, uh, an email received from Bethel Pride. Bethel Pride is asking for the ability to uh, have the flag raising on May thirty-first, uh, as they've done before. And if possible, fly the flag for uh, the event for the month of June. Uh, like it's done, it didn't say anything about a week or anything else, but they're asking us for the month of June. And, uh, I think the question is, we want to add this to the agenda for discussion here a little bit. Since it's us, I can add on or that. So I'll add that. I'll make that motion here in a few minutes. Uh, we now we also received a late email from, um, the Chair of the Inland Women's Commission. Um, there are two challenges. One, we have an unfilled position uh, for the Republicans. Somebody had resigned and remains to be filled. And we have another individual who, uh, is in the in a seat and has not been showing up. And there's a request for that person not to run next time around. I believe that's, uh, Ms. Ferguson, who I don't think is planning to run. So that's something I think we will just have to kind of look at and we'll get a hold of the Chair of the Republican Council and ask for people we put forward for that. Approval of minutes. Um, I would accept a motion to approve the public hearing minutes from April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. So second.
Yeah.
Um, Stan, you're the only one there. At the public event.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, not the Tommy.
Well, I guess we have to, uh, now wait, how does that work if I'm the only one?
Why would you have to approve his minutes to a public hearing?
It's 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 actually, it's actually something we've always done. I don't know that we really have to, but it's done that in past practice. That's it. Um, well, here's the other thing. Um, you know, there's there's some folks who that do talk about whether or not you're at a meeting or not, and if you have the ability to see the meeting or know what happened and review it, then you can vote for the minutes. So what would you think I do? Should we just all vote to accept the public hearing minutes? Or is that something we just?
I either go that we have to do it.
Yeah. I tell you what, I'll I'll make the call. We're not doing it. Next up, uh, I accept a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen annual town budget meeting minutes from April second, two thousand twenty-five. Okay, any? Hold on here, I apologize. This is, uh, I possibly this is the approval of the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes, April fifteenth.
Also move it again.
Okay, so let's see if we're all here.
Yes.
Yep, Andy's here. Any discussion? Saying no, fair minds, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimous. Accept a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's special town meeting minutes for April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. From second.
Second.
Any discussion? And we were all there for the town meeting. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Wait, move very long. Okay, quick, um, quick for selecting reports. Uh, just wanted to kind of cover a couple of things. So just kind of heads up that we have, um, a lot of stuff coming our way with respect to what we have, what we have. Okay, you know what? I'm gonna I'm gonna hold on to this part. We're gonna get to part of it in business. Um, we had a resignation from the Ethics Commission, uh, Francis Poole, Republican resigned. We're waiting on her actual signature. Um, and we actually have another vacancy there, so the Ethics Commission cannot meet right as it is now. So I'll look for a Republican member from the uh, Republican Party. The other one could be a, uh, unaffiliated Democrat or Independent because of minority rules. I've, uh, asked somebody to join it. I found or let show interest. And if there's interest, I'll bring up the committee here. Okay, let's see, uh, and Whitlins.
Paul.
Yeah, big time. There's, uh, the other thing I just want to throw out, and we haven't added this, and it's I'll kind of put it out to you guys if you want to add, but we, uh, we have been approached by NuVance, i.e. Northwell. It's going to be time to review our contract for, uh, permanent service. So that's something we we could add it and do it now. We can do it at the next meeting. It's not a super important thing, but if we do it, we'd have to have an executive session. I think they talk about what it is. We'd have to do a bid waiver. Um, they're they basically even this percentage increase, which of course I'm not going to discuss until we're ready to.
Do we have time to?
I think we could do it. I think we I think we have time because it's really it's really in July, but but we'll need a we'll need a vote at the next.
Why don't we just put it on the agenda for next meeting, possible possible executive session as well.
More survey.
Executive session.
Yeah, we're gonna have a definition.
It looks like we proved you that we can always.
Yeah, we could. We could address it. Yeah. Okay. Um, back there, I'm not going to do it in a lot because I know we have a lot to do here. Um, okay, first up, whole business. Uh, consideration of a license agreement for eighteen Booster Street, use of town property for non-permanent structure. Uh, we have discussed this before. Um, today, Tim, I forgot your last name, so sorry. Tim Sumler is with us tonight. He's the owner of eighteen Booster. Um, you know, Tim has come forward, I I guess, for background. At one point, um, I guess Tim approached planning his building. Uh, they removed some trees, a fence on the property, cleaned it up. Uh, there was a lot of drama whether or not they were allowed to approve it or not, but it looked better. And, uh, Tim had come forth asking about putting a shed on the property. The time was in transit already. And I think we found out that it was actually the town property it was going to be sitting on. Uh, so we approached and we started talking about a license agreement. Um, there wasn't really enough time to get that done so quickly. It's been with the attorney for some period of time. And that kind of brings us to today where, um, you know, we're looking at what we can have a lot of things on that property under a license agreement. Cannot be ameasement. But it could be ameasement, but I don't think the town is any appetite for doing a long-term ameasement. So the idea was do a license agreement that would, uh, would just be there while Tim is there. And then, you know, he'd be responsible for removing a structure. So that's kind of where it brought us today. And, you know, when we talked about it, they wanted to give us some time to see it.
How big is the shed?
How big is that shed?
It is, uh, fourteen by twenty-two.
Is it on concrete or is it on?
It's on the, uh, gravel. It has the built-in shelf that it sits on. So we're like a professional company, you know, they build in the shelf so that way you can level.
They're like six by sixes or something. What are those?
It's, um, it's like on a six by six. It just sits on gravel. You're supposed to anchor it.
Now, did you pull a building permit to do it? Oh, yes.
So how did zoning approve it if it was on town property? That's kind of.
Yeah, I I thought those.
I didn't know. Yeah, I didn't ask.
No, you need to, you need to.
I didn't ask about that.
If it's over, I think a hundred, if you don't, if it's over a hundred square feet, you gotta put it.
Yeah, even a shed that you dropped there.
And of course. Yeah, they come out and inspect them and everything. Got to make sure they're anchored into the ground. To make sure all the framing, everything's correct and everything.
Yeah, it was a delivery one. So the the folks, rest of the backyard's there. So it was just, it was professionally done. They're just leveled. It's still, but.
Was it? Was it? But the question, you know, there was a building permit because we have to go chat. We'll go chat right down. Okay. Well, and the and the other concept, the other issue that came up was a fence. Uh, the property in itself goes right through the middle of the shed on a catty corner from where the fire that fire hydrant is kind of all the way over to the other side, which is the part of the shed that's closest to the road. It's kind of a catty corner. There used to be a fence there, but they took down that other fence, which would have been.
So what I guess my question is like, what was the, he's allowed this off, right?
Yes, we, yeah, because we can ask.
What was the confusion? Like, when you filled out your zoning permit, obviously, you're supposed to show where the shed fits on your property. Why it's cracked?
So, so it's a lot of ignorance on my part. I didn't really understand all that. So.
Okay.
You know, I've been starting this process since around nine years ago. You know, so this is always overgrown stuff. So I just started saying, I'm just keeping it up, keeping it up. The trees just kept falling down every time I searched. Trouble. So initially, the fence that was there um, just kept getting broken because the trees had fallen out, you know, so we removed that fence. And the plan, the original plan was to replace the fence. The shed came later when I got more equipment. So I can put stuff in the shed. So that's that's where we are with it. So it wasn't, it wasn't, um, thinking that just came up in a second. So it's been about nine years. Get this on. I just didn't understand the actual process. So when I was told to get a permit, I went and did the permit. Then I started it. I was told stop. Then I got permission. Will stop. So I started and then, um,
So I guess my question again is, you told to stop because zoning realized that it was encroaching on the town property, that you have any setbacks? Like, what was the, what was?
I believe that I believe that was the case after after everything.
And Mike, do you have some sort of license agreement that you feel comfortable with?
Well, I have a license agreement and obviously the extent of the license is described. And I had written originally that if agreed to, if approved, it would be just to allow the shed to remain in that location and just the right to pass when we pass over town property to access the shed said to the shed and for no other reason. That no other rights to the property is clearly town property. Um, so it'd be very limited to just to just that, just during a period of time, not transferable, a personal license, just for the named party. Um, very, very limited. So the fence would not be on town property. That's what had to be brought onto his property.
Okay.
No further encroachments.
So basically, like, there's no trimming of bushes, nothing like that. It's just the shed there. That's it.
There are no bushes. There's nothing. There's just, there's one tree on the owner's side of the shed.
Right. Well, I mean, stuff's gonna grow though.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's kind of, I mean, the winds always come back.
Yeah, right now it's all grass.
Uh, I'll, I'm gonna speak against it. I think it sets a precedent for, uh, future people coming in and wanting the license and the agreements or permission to put things on the town property. Um, you know, it's between the the homeowner and the person who their reliable company that the brought your shed in should have known better about dropping it there. And, you know, it it could have been put in further on your property, you know, with with the, because they did leveling with railroad ties and the gravel with that. So um, I I'm not in favor. I think it sets a precedent and it should be totally on your property.
So I'm gonna say something. So I understand that. So all the trees and the fence and everything that I cut down, I paid for all the structures that I have, all the area that I was taking care of all the years. Other than we can take the tree down, we can remove the fence, do this, do that. I didn't make moves unless I felt it was okay based off what I was told. So it it wouldn't make sense from you spent sixty, seventy thousand dollars just to be doing something. You know, I I keep getting stopped and then I'm like, okay, so maybe I'll go start to go on here. So I got permission to do this. Then I says, okay, so I got permission for that. But fence initially was the primary deal. Um, we got people coming through the yard. They're pooping all over with the dogs. I got I got grandkids who want to run around and play. There is a safety issue between there and the parking. So everyone's free to come to the parking lot because it's public property. Same as the, uh, amusement location for town. It's not, it's not for me to, uh, how can we say? Keep this for me in reference to what it looks like. It's more like it was just the original plan and I went, it's like nine years now that I've been talking about it trying to get it taken care of. So here we are with a shed, a fence that's been developed already and just a portion that just needs to go across. The reason why we didn't move the shed up is because the only tree that was left behind that was on the property is in front of the shed. To move that shed up would be to remove that tree. We removed all, I think, thirty-two trees that was there. You know, which was an insane, insane cost. The walls, we designed a wall, I designed a wall, you know, I made a deal with this, and the whole point was just make it safe and be comfortable and not have to worry about anything else. So, you know, so I'm not trying to take anything. I'm just trying to just.
And you would come to zoning and zoning told you it was okay to cut the trees down?
Yeah, I was told. That's correct.
Well, not the zoning commission, but the planning and zoning person that cut up trees. Yeah.
I mean, I'm.
But they but also planning and zoning went out when you started putting the gravel spot with the chairs and stuff. They came out that day and said, stop, that's town property.
They momma stopped.
Right.
And there was like a permission thing, I guess, that was going on with that.
Well, there was, there was no official permission thing because they don't get to just give a permission. They never contacted us. It was no permission thing at that point. Right? You you came with, you'd already ordered the shed. And I was like, well, we'll do what we can. And then the shed got delivered. And then the fence went up. That that's kind of what was a bit of a problem. If you want to put the fence and fence your property, great, that's your property. You can't fence a public property. That that really takes it another step of taking the property. Whether it's for you or whether it's to get dogs out or whatever, that the fence was something.
How far, how far is the fence into town property?
It would just be right behind the shed.
Yeah, but that's, uh, I mean, the whole, the whole thing is probably wide.
Five feet from the curb, maybe.
That's five feet from the curb, but or even closer, the way it looked where it was coming out, but that that whole piece is probably, what, twenty feet, thirty feet in? Like, what I'm saying is that shed is sitting right on the middle, the line between town property is right on the line. It's, yeah.
So I don't, I don't, you know, putting the fence up would restrict the view of people driving in.
And that that actually is a challenge to, which we've had complaints about the fence, the fence on the front part of the property. Because it's it's blocked the sightline. Right now, I know there's some issues going on with that because of the, it's created a real problem in the front end of the building.
On the side or?
Uh, when you, when you drive out.
When you go up to.
Yeah, whatever, what is the main road right by your house?
Well, it was just.
Yeah. Yeah. So whatever, whatever the street is, I mean, technically, the street behind town holds a street or used to be. Well, when you go out, it's that, we don't have to get into that now, but.
I just, I did. Sorry. So how the fence used to sit before the town came in and put the new sidewalk? They used to sit back as the other fence does on the side. But because it created a step, I I couldn't bring the fence back because now it's a step there that I can't, though they got given like slow bid or anything. It's just now it's like a water space. A worry. So the fence had to go there.
Okay, well, we'll figure the front, the other thing out. And we're just focused on the back.
Yeah, I guess my feelings are, you know, if zoning gave him, and I know it wasn't the zoning commission gave him permission to cut the trees now. So I don't know. I guess I'm just saying we should be a little bit lenient because he went and asked for permission. He was told he could do it. It's not like he just decided to clear cut town property and then come back and say, oops, you know.
No, no.
Like, and so, I mean, so.
But the fence was always what you wanted.
That was the original thing.
Was just replaced.
Came later because I got a rider mower.
Yeah.
I got a whole bunch of things that's, you know.
Well, replacing the fence would have been no big deal because that would have been on your property. Right? That would have been the crappy old fence.
It was probably the the town had probably put that chain link fence up where it was a school.
Probably.
Yeah, it's probably built back many, many years. And then the trees grew in and out around it.
How mu- how much did it spend on this project, honestly? Um, so if I, if I just count the fence and shed and just the, uh, the grass and all that, probably around seventy grand. All right. And and if I count the wall and all the other stuff, probably like another eighty-five.
Well, the wall's up against your house. That's, yeah.
Yeah. So we got the wall over there and then we have, uh, the wall that comes on the side. The fence goes across that. So the all these years that I've been here, my intentions have been to move. My wife's not gonna let me anyway. You know, so but the the whole point is to be here and be comfortable, but not to, you know, not to just have people just freelance and walk through. People are just cutting through.
Well, remember, the issue was you put the fence up, not the shed. You could have put the shed on your side and put the fence up, and that's the thing we have to, we have to think about as a group. Because then, you know, we do, we do open a precedent.
No, I understand. That's why I did. I don't, I don't disagree with that at all. I just, it would just look a little nuts with the fence to go in between the shed. The door is right there.
Well, I know you stuck the shed, you stuck the shed right in the fence line.
Yeah, so it's just.
I know it's shocking that I'm willing to be lenient. I'm not sure. There's gas in the audience that I'm willing to be lenient on it, but it's the fact that he went to zoning. I mean, what he should have been told was you're not cutting any trees down on town property.
Yep.
You're not doing anything. So it was almost like we kind of opened the floodgates a little bit. I'm not excusing you from just saying I'm going to build a fence where I want to build a fence and stuff like that. But, I mean, it should have been made clear from the beginning.
It wasn't made clear that.
That nothing.
Yeah, it wasn't made clear, though, that he wasn't to build. That was after the trees. The tree thing happened. And then he was out there putting the little gravel pit with the old seats and stuff on town property. And that's where we rushed out and said, whoa, whoa, whoa.
You had already ordered the shed at that time?
Yeah, I've ordered the shed. But we didn't, the shed was already pretty much paid for. So we had to wait the shed to get delivered until like the end of February. And we ordered it way back, but we kept putting it on hold so that way we can, uh, get permissions. So we got, we got kind of the permissionless, which he was just speaking about with the shed.
Well, and you you approached us for permission, but remember, we we never actually had a chance to give you permission. You said the shed was on the way. And it took a while for her.
But if he got a building permit.
That I don't understand.
I mean, if 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 he legitimately had a building permit and it was inspected, I mean, that's.
Well, it would have been a plot plan for the building permit, right?
For the zoning permit, you have to, you have to go through zoning first. Zoning will look and see where the shed is proposed to go on the thing. They'll check to make sure that you need your setbacks. I don't know what the setbacks are. That's probably it. Was it R twenty zone or ten thousand foot zone? What is it? R ten or R twenty? Your house.
I don't know.
Depending on the size of the lot, depends on the setback.
Is the is the shed ten feet from the parking lot?
It isn't ten feet. So it was the initial statement was, hey, listen, what you have to do is you have to go ten feet from the the curb. And what what that would have done, that would push the shed into the tree. So the trees that were around the fence that were the trees ruined.
Yeah.
Um, those were all removed already. All the around was already turned up. All the construction was done. And the gravel pit that was being put there, that is where the shed is still sitting. And and we was, we was looking for different locations, but it there wasn't any other location without having to bring in another rescue team to do so because of the already put down the grass, already put everything down. And, you know, so everything was already in preparation. So I mean, I I do, like I say, I do understand that, what what you're saying, with the president, you got a set of precedents. I hear that. But there's, this was just purely ignorance in my part, but when I hear stuff from folks and they say it's okay, I says, okay, I'm not, I didn't really think of the document. I just took the word of the person. You know, I come from that.
How long, how long has the shed been there until?
About two months. About two months now. So and it's just been crazy cold outside. So the ground was extremely hard. So and we travel a lot, so we're trying to eliminate that traveling thing and just kind of stay focused.
And there was no other place on that backyard property that the barn could have gone, the shed could have gone.
Um, if, I think it could have if, um, if it was moved at the time when we was taking the trees out, that would have, I would have took that other tree down and I would have did something different. But since that tree was there and where the location is the same place where the other shed was, it's it's sitting in that same spot. It's just bigger, you know, this this is taking a larger space.
Okay. So right now we would have to we would not only have to leave license for the shed, shed, we have to decide what we're going to do about the fence.
Well, I think part of me would say that if a legal document needs to be drawn, then he needs to get a lawyer to draw the document and let Melanie review it. I don't think it's the town's oldest to pay, to pay for the attorney fees for.
Well, it's it's on us, it's on the town, actually, because we're the ones who are giving a license to something. It's not the applicant's job to do a license if it's our license.
Well, also, I'd like to hear more from the planning and zoning and the building department because, you know, it's.
Planning and zoning is not here. Told them. They retired.
Yeah.
What? They retired.
The person retired, I hear you, who gave him permission.
Well, there's some someone still involved in the planning of zoning. They can look over the records in the minutes of the meeting.
Where's only, who's not done it? I mean.
Would have you done it?
That's the problem.
Well, he was just. If, 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 if a town official had said anything to him and he just went off and did it all on his own, I would be a hundred percent in agreement that this is
Right.
a hundred percent uh, immutable point. But the point is, is he was told he could take the trees down. Right?
Yeah.
You're allowing the activity on the town property. And, you know.
One thing led to another, Brian. Cutting the tree down and then the the shed going up and then after the fact, a fence going up around the shed.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I I don't.
Does the shed go across the front of, I mean, the fence go across the front of the property as well or not?
No, it's just.
Different size.
So maybe.
Different size. If there's a fence on the front of the property, whole property is fenced.
But it's a different size.
Different fence on the front.
How, how, how much shorter?
That four-foot fence on the front.
Yeah, it's like a four-foot.
Four, six foot in the back.
So the six-foot fence is what's causing the sideline issue?
No.
The four-foot on the front is causing it going out. The six-foot fence, we're worried about calling coming in and out on our side. But that hasn't happened yet because there's no fence there. He stopped building it by fire. So we don't know about that sightline or if that's going to be a challenge.
Well, there's a space there. So you got the stop sign, you know, so that whole, so the whole plan, that's why the fence is doing this, was to leave that whole area where the fire hydrant is and whatever that thing thing that's sticking out the ground. So that way, if there are muted access for the towns, we have to do what they need to do by that location. That's what, that's, that's what the proposal was also stated to me that if I leave three to four feet space behind the location where we're putting everything for the plows, if they were to push snow in, that would be suitable. And I says, okay, but there was nothing written on paper other than the.
He took, oh, they were put the fence. No, nobody told him where to put the fence. He did only.
Who told you that? The fence company or the town?
What's that?
Where to put the fence so it didn't get plowed out.
Oh, so the the town talked to me about the fence because really.
On the front or the back?
The back.
Who talked to you about the back fence?
I talked to, that's about the back. She was explaining to me about the the location and, but she didn't give me permission per se. She told me what I would need to do if I were to get the.
Is the back of the fence great? It's like, why not? Not really sure because it hasn't been built over yet. Maybe, but it's also a parking lot. It's it's the out, it's the front entrance that has been a problem.
Where I'm going with this is maybe allow the shed so you can keep the shed and access it on your property. Period.
Well, I mean, what we could do is allow them to put the fence in front of the shed and over. So you can access the shed from the side.
As long as it doesn't, as long as it doesn't block. I mean, sightline is an issue that, you know, that would be. I mean, it's different with zoning if it's, it's it's not meeting the zoning requirements, right?
Yeah.
Because it's not on his property. So, you know, the fence is an issue.
Yeah.
Very sorry, too. Yeah, please. If you're okay with it.
Yeah, but, yeah, and then we're gonna, we're, we're gonna wrap up here in another minute. Yeah, but, yeah, and then we're gonna, we're, we're gonna wrap up here in another minute because we're gonna, we're gonna have to carry this in this meeting anyway. Because I think what we're gonna have to do is we're gonna have to have a discussion of whether maybe we do us.
Maybe have Eric look at the sidelines.
Yeah, and we're, and we're probably gonna have to check with the building department to see if they actually.
Building department, they're still there.
They know, they know.
Well, it's easy to see if there's a permit for it though, so they have to look at it.
If you pull the permit.
If there's a permit, you'll see it right on the field card. It'll say that there's a shed.
Yeah.
Accessory structure on a field card if it's been updated.
So this is what we have. We're just, so this is the fence. This is the yard. This is the parking lot over here.
Yeah, I get it.
Alright. That's in the back and that's off of the uh off of the, you know, the curb. And then the area where the fire hydrant, it cuts all the way in. So there's really not a sightline issue back there because it's all, it goes this ways.
So this shed sits.
Perpendicular or.
Show me, show me where the property line is for us.
Hard to see, the property line.
So it's cutting, it's the back of the shed that the problem, not the width. It's the back.
Yeah, it cuts right through the middle of the shed.
And where does this property line go to here?
So it goes over, do you see that fence kind of comes out? There's a fire hydrant there. That's where the fire, the property line begins.
So that's.
It goes diagonal through the shed over to the front of where that shed is.
So all this is not his property.
Just, just in the front. So from where that post is, right behind that post, through the middle of the shed over is on his property.
All this is okay.
All this is his on this side. See that tree? Like everything, that's the tree he's talking about. But if the shed were moved up ten feet or so.
It would be, it would be right in the tree.
Turn ninety degrees along his front.
There, there used to be a tree here that was probably like, I don't know, really tall and it was like.
So the fence, the fence is, is legal on the side of the property, correct?
In, 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 in total reaches where it is now, because that would be the property line almost, but this right here, that little piece of fence probably is on our property.
And what about the corner of the shed? Which property is that?
That's our property. This corner of the shed is definitely our property and then it goes diagonal through the shed. So like maybe this corner here might be on his property.
Yeah, so maybe just require this section of fence to come out, that fence it through the shed. So there's no sightline issue.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's what it's already doing.
No, but yeah, no, because I could see, yeah, I could see, what I'm saying is you remove this section here. It's come across and then hook into your shed if you want to.
There's doors on it.
There's a door.
Yeah, he said, has access.
Then just remove that section of fence and you have no sightline issue. Where's the sightline issue if you remove that section of fence?
No, there wouldn't be, but he, yeah, but he, that, he's, his problem is he wants to back fence it somehow.
Just so that the.
I mean, we're giving you the shed. You know, we gotta figure this out. We're gonna take more than one meeting to figure this out. Or if it's really just to keep the kids in, maybe you just do a, a, a.
A chain link.
Not chain link, uh, you know, like a, a stock, the, the post fence, just put like chain link on that.
Yeah. Either way.
We got, I, I, let's see about the building permit or all that. Because if, because if he, if he truly got a building permit. I mean, you would think you were allowed to do it, right?
And if you got permission a second time.
Right.
Somebody verbally.
That's my point.
Okay. So we have, we have a motion on, on the table. Motion on the table, the table. I'll second that. On favor?
I third, yeah.
All in favor?
All favor, aye? Okay, and the motion is table for the next meeting, Mary. Thank you. All right. Uh, I, I make a motion that we move the Board of Education's uh consideration of expenditures request for HVAC. The next, I should say the first item under new business. Do you have a second?
Second.
On favor of moving that item? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. An abstention or?
Just seeing what else we have.
Well, they're, I'm just, they're keeping them on. I just kind of want to give them a chance to go on, that's all.
Would they move Janice up too?
Nope. I can't move everybody up. I think I have a highway here. I mean, I got the, so let's get moving. Let's just, um, okay, so there were two, did you, did you want to weigh on that? Okay, there was an abstention, motion.
I like saying.
All right, uh, so consideration of the Board of Education's facility expenditures request for HVAC, alarm systems, other repairs. Dr. Carver.
Jen, you guys.
Hello.
Good day.
Hi. Hi. So, um, Jen put together a memo. I'm sorry, I have a really bad call, so I want to apologize in advance. Um, regarding the facilities expenditures that we had indicated that would probably be coming to you at the end of the year. Um, I can let Jen and Tyler do the overview of highlights of repairs, but we're requesting, um, as we talked about in the budget process, um, for payment of these expenses. Because we've exceeded the four sixty account. Jen, do you want to jump in?
Sure. Um, in the memo, there's a summary. The majority of the request is coming from HVAC repairs. There's also some alarm system repairs. A little bit of plumbing and security work as well. Um, and we linked in a detailed spreadsheet where you can see the breakdown of what makes up those numbers, uh, especially the HVAC beats, because it, it's multiple, um, equipment failures across four of our schools.
Okay. Yeah, we're looking at I one. It's the last item in your package. About. Um, that's H one, next one. Let's move, we should move behind H one. Right behind the H one. Right behind that one. It looks like it looks up to that. One, two. There you go. Is that it?
Okay.
All right. I've got it. Um, all right. So yes, obviously we've, we've, we knew the four sixty account was going to run low at the end. I mean, I guess if there are any questions about specific things, that's pretty reasonable amount overall.
And also, we also wanted to let you know that right now our maintenance provider for HVAC systems is doing their preventative maintenance. And they haven't completely finished that. So it would not be a surprise if they found some additional issues that are not captured in this list.
And I noticed on the back of this, some of these are actually the quote, some of actual costs. So if this is actually already been done.
Yes, that's correct. Yes.
Any thoughts, any discussion besides constipated floor?
Capital not recurring.
Uh, yes.
Recurrent budget.
Yes. So with that, I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion that we approve thirty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. I'll, I'll strike that. We recommend to the Board of Finance the amount of thirty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-two dollars to come from capital on recurring for uh, the school HVAC, alarm system, plumbing and security repairs.
Second.
Any further discussion? With that, I'll try your minds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This one, no. Some of these are known. Really should have just been kept in the budget. Should have been spent on true emergency repairs.
Well, these are regular facility budget items. When they run out of money. The four sixty, what do you mean? Four sixty. What's that?
Like that, you knew you were gonna be going. Do you know?
Could you let us know what you're looking at, Brian? And maybe we can have a fair.
So it's, you're, you're, you're approved.
We're approved. So we'll, we'll talk at some point, but we don't want to go go back around and talk about something you've already voted on necessarily. Unless somebody wants to really vote.
Nothing to do with that. Just saying that if it's a known expense, you withhold that when you have a true repair, you do the true repair. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
You hold that money in reserve, right? You know it's a known expense.
The four sixty account, I mean, I, I mean, maybe I'm missing something. That is the account that there's supposed to be all repairs on.
That's correct.
Repairs. I mean, these are, that's their only maintenance account. So.
I guess you're missing my point.
I, I, I.
Discussing the other guy.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to understand. All right. Next up, um, consideration of assigning the animal shelter project to the Public Site and Building Commission. You're out there, Public Works Director.
Oh. Okay, so, um, I guess first off, I think, uh, I think I'm pretty aware of the need to rebuild the animal shelter. I don't think I've been involved in that, but I mean, well, I can think of two.
It's been condemned over and over by.
Yeah, we've received letters from the, from the state.
Yeah.
Saying it's not satisfactory. If you see in the garage, there's giant crap in the door. Uh, well, members of the Board of Finance saw that when it comes to the floor. Last year. So it's been, it's been a thing for a while. Um, we had, um, we, we, it's been looked at. We've had, we had, uh, we had, we had people come out and look at it and recommend what should try to rebuild this building. Or the new one, they advised that we build something that not try to refurbish the building. It's too far gone. So that, that's something we looked into. So, um, what you should have in your packet, I don't know if you have it all. Uh, the four or five sheets is some preliminary work we did in-house. Um, you can see in the existing floor plan of the animal shelter. You can see the proposed floor plan. We've done a lot of research. We, um, Stephen Shanley's not here, but he's been involved in this whole thing. Um, we went and saw Danbury's new facility. Uh, we went to look at Newtown's relative with new facility. I'm not sure how others. Uh, Dawes having a facility. So we looked at all those and consultation with Stephen Shanley came up with something kind of similar to what Danbury has on the map today. And that's what this second sheet is, this design. Um, you can see an elevation on the third sheet and then on the fourth sheet, you can see a comparison of size to what we're proposing to the, um, existing floor plan. And then finally, there's kind of a site layout, suggests a site out. And then this is, this is all just stuff we did in-house as a preliminary. So we were advising to get into the public site building. I mean, you know, what we would suggest they really want to have the those two, um, so, um, I think we've already done all the evaluation of, of what we need. Worked the code requirements, gathered a lot of ideas. And as, as you can see here, developed a concept, but I think somebody, I mean, we're recommending a public site building, put it out for architectural design. Select designers, select an architect, that is, and develop an architectural self-construction and go from there. So, um, you know, we would help guide them through that process. Obviously, we've seen all that we've done. There's a lot more information if we just simply put it here. We have a lot of photos, ideas, information we gathered. So, um, we don't want that to be lost. We would definitely communicate with them fully and transition that. Uh, but we thought it was a good project for them to take over from this point.
I want to add, add a couple of things because we've obviously been talking about this, um, it's important because I mean, I just think in the department with everything going on, we don't have the bandwidth to manage a project like this. It really belongs to public site and building. The other thing is with public site and building, we're making a, a little more of a a change, but an increase in connection between public works and public site and building. Um, with them, them actually staffing it and all the guiding through because we've had so many projects end up with things that aren't manageable by the department. Uh, you know, Rockwell Johnson Schools with the amount of proprietary lighting and now what we're going through, but the police department and the lights were good for eight years and you can't get them anymore. Like there's, there needs to be more connection with the people who maintain facilities. So that's part of this process is they're going to be taking a greater role, helping public site and building. Um, and the other thing I want to mention about this is, you know, we will be talking to Redding and trying to see what kind of, yeah, what kind of help we can get from them as we move this along. Because, um, you know, we're trying to use something somewhat regional with their animal control. So we'll try to get some sort of input from Redding and help. Uh, that's, those are my only comments about it at this point.
A long time coming.
Yes. I was, I was, I, I saw him, he gave him the plans. I don't know if he had any specific questions. I mean, again, this is all preliminary. It's not going to be up to public.
Well, these are preliminary. I would, I would have comments to the committee about design of the, the roof and all that.
Sure.
And, um, maybe switching into the parking, bringing that building closer to the road and having the parking on the side and the dog run in the back. Uh, would be my suggestion to the committee, but, uh, that's for the, you know, future. Is to get it started, to get someone involved and start working on a plan. Doesn't necessarily say that this is the plan.
No, it's, it's just like, yeah. Any further discussion, Brian, anything you wanted to ask?
How many dogs does he have in there? Did anyone give them time? Did anyone ask? What's, I mean.
It can vary. He can, he can add up to twelve. Um, but it does vary from three to eight and nine. It depends on the day and it depends on what's going on in town. It's helped, he supports other popularity, you know, employees, you know, so.
He also mentioned that there has to be an extra kennel or two open because of being able to clean kettles, a kennel.
The way it's currently situated is he can't safely, um, work with an animal, especially if it's, uh, aggressive in capacity, because he has to physically handle it. He has to put it into another kennel to throw the kennel. So he always has to have an empty kennel to move however many dogs he has per day. So, because he has no outdoor run. So he always has to bring in the animal and the animal.
So am I right? Because we're suggesting here to go from nine kennels to twelve?
Well, he certainly has.
Oh, he certainly has.
Keeping it at the exact same.
Okay, but we're adding outdoor runs.
Adding outdoor runs, right. Because that's a requirement of the code anyway.
The kennel size is a little larger. Four, two kennels, you're a little bigger. Thanks.
Uh, with that, I move that we assign the animal shelter project to the Public Site and Building Committee. Any further discussion? With that, I'll try my minds off. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's the end, straight. Um, next up, uh, consideration of assigning the highway garage roof project to the Public Site and Building Commission. You want to go with this one?
Yeah, okay. Talk about a long time coming. This is also and, you know, I think everyone, all three of you guys are also aware of the history of this and kind of the starts and stops, which are kind of unfortunate. Um, so we want, I can kind of go into the history, but basically what we found out was, it was, you know, there was kind of a push for this, I'll say. Um, back in twenty seventeen before I got there, getting to twenty twenty. So we started looking at this twenty twenty one. I did try to kind of, um, reanimate it. And twenty twenty two, we brought in, we, we, we had an consultant tossed up a budget for construction for the roof and for design, and they came up with two point one million for the total construction cost and other than seventy-five thousand for design. Which we thought was pretty high. So at that point, it kind of stalled and lower priority. Um, I'm, I'm trying to, the reason I brought it up, we're trying to go back because we, we, we reconnected with the original architect back in twenty seventeen, because we were kind of looking at these numbers and thinking, you know, we talked about this a little bit, two point one million seems high, but it didn't seem right. So uh, when, when we talked to the original architect, Gary Tanatino, he basically said, you know, his concern, you know, because we, we also said, you know, look, this has been going on for so long, it stalled. And I think the last time I brought it up, probably I think it was two, five, six, seven, like. Already. And so I know this has been out there. I think the concern is that, you know, I think he kind of summarized it well. If we get some kind of willing, you know, like a three foot wet snow, he's concerned that roof could collapse. So is that you know, is that something that could happen? Yes. Is it definitely going to happen? No, not necessarily. So something that I think we've kind of skated on for a while, but I feel like we're coming to act on it. Um, unfortunately, because of the time that's elapsed, we've looked into trying to use some of the work that has gone into the past. There is not standing by that. I think we want to re-scan to start the off, the steelings of the wells rust or, or deterioration. Um, but, uh, basically what it boils down to is kind of three parts. There's the, there's columns and the structures. So that's a structural, steel kind of steel erection project. There's the roof itself. And that would be the roof, obviously. And then the other thing we wanted to do, uh, was a sprint roof. Sprint roof system, because the value of all that putting in there. Uh, sprint roof system has been, you know, Bob's talked about for a while as an insurance policy for all of it. So, um, anyway, that's, that's probably. Anyway, that's, that's probably more of the history than I wanted to, to, but where we're at right now, we asked Gary, Gary Tanatino, who's the architect. He has given us a quote, uh, for nine thousand dollars for assessment. Um, unfortunately, he was not willing to, he was designed, it's not an assessment, so that's the first. Both they could have in the packet, the Gary Tanatino. Our second is a, um. Is it the public structural assessment from? Everyone here's named Gary, Gary Terrell. Uh, for the structural assessment for the ten thousand eight hundred. And then, um. The sprinkler design, uh, is the third one there, the general drafting design, Inc., which is a sprinkler design, that would be a full design, not just a mere assessment. For the students, that would be designed, that, that proposes nine classes three. Um, we would obviously give these to public site building, they don't have to go with these. Um, you know, no connect getting used or anything, you know, it's anything. But we would definitely, and, and there's more, I guess there's more than, if there's anything I left out, is, is. Building, um. But I think that's kind of where we're at, and that's why we try to take things and see if we can do this for less than, than what our previous consultant. From talking to the architect.
Didn't we approve money and capital for this way back when?
There was money, yeah, when I came in, it was actually money.
Because it was shovel ready back then, I remember the old.
Was it shovel ready? The structural piece was shovel ready, the roof wasn't.
So was any of the work we approved done?
They cut it out to bid and they got bids done from steel rectors, but they didn't ever execute it.
So do you know how much money we approved back? Because I remember. This coming before the board of finance.
I didn't know there was money.
Yeah, there was money approved for it already.
I know there was some that was spent on.
We spent some money on fixing those columns, I don't know how much that was. Where they went in and rebuilt the.
Because I remember. What was his name, was it Murawski? Yeah, he came, he came before us with this back in. I can remember it was two thousand sixteen or when it was, I know I was on the board of finance and we discussed it. Quite a while, we were told that the repairs would be made.
But there was money approved.
There was money approved, I'm pretty, I'm pretty, I mean, you, you remember there was money.
I, I, I think you're right, there was some money, I don't know.
Yeah, there was definitely money approved for it.
Um, okay, so, so with respect to where we stand on this, um, I, I would advise we go ahead and get it in their hands. And then if we have to do sort of this one way, then come back to us and we'll know how much money we have.
But one, one of the reasons, I'm, I'm sure the bid came in way higher, because you're talking about sprinkling. Building on, I'm not here to argue the merits of that, but incredibly expensive to install. That's why.
The original, that original work didn't include sprinklers, I don't think.
And I am comparing to this one, that they, they're saying it's two point one now.
No, no, so, we went, we had collars coming in twenty twenty-two, which is.
Yeah, they thought it was two point one, two, one point one, or two point one, but the other thing. This thing is a kit building, as you explained, right? So it's not a normal.
Have to stay unless you're interested, you're not going to upset us, leave the meeting. I'm saying you're not going to hurt our feelings.
If it's okay, let's move this along.
That's fine.
Okay, so, uh, with that, um, I move that we assign the highway garage roof project to the public site and building commission.
The sprinklers, you're going to do more, or are you going to?
That's all highway garage roof project, it's kind of together, right, it's.
Yeah, I would say, yeah, we, we either looked into doing it separately, but then again, we.
Because it's a rough trust and sprinkler.
The problem is the, the trusses might not be able to hold the sprinklers.
Would, would you have been worked over if I add?
Well, there's, yeah, the sprinklers and the engineering.
If you want me to summarize, it's, it's the, the steel. Steel structural repair, the roof repair, sprinkler.
Right, that sounds good.
So, so basically we're going to assign the highway garage roof project, which includes roof repair, structure repair and sprinkler system from public site. On favor, say aye, aye? Okay, um, we're going to move to, uh, what is this, this is H one. Uh, the Public Utilities Commission project, water, systems supervisor, control and data acquisition upgrades, SCADA. And refer to board of finance. Okay. Because this was going to be.
Oh, it's over a million.
So it's going to go to the board of finance and then it's going to go to a.
Was, did you have more conversations since the PUC meeting about that?
Yeah.
Or something, we don't meet the, you know, the grant.
Oh, are they sure they're going to get the grant?
There was, there was talk about.
They, they, they think they're going to get the grant. That's, that, that. No, no, that, we can make a condition along the grant, obviously, because that's what we did before, we approved it, we don't get the grant, we don't do the project.
Oh, no, 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 I was, he was talking about the.
I'm not sure that's true. Because we looked at the charter and it says a, a project of one million or more. Is we did the same thing with, with, uh, Trowbridge, we had to go over a referendum for it.
Right, right.
Because we had a grant, and, but the town always spent seven hundred and some thousand, but the grant took it over total project cost of one point four.
Right.
Like, the first step is the board of finance.
Yes, yes.
And then if they approve, then it comes back and we settle.
All right, I thought it was the other way around, but chances shaking our head yes over here. Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, as I recall, even with Trowbridge, we went, we, we, we're to finance. Okay. So, um, I move that we forward to the board of finance, a consideration of a total project cost for SCADA upgrades. An amount of one million, one hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars, which includes seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars for construction. Thirty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars for contingency. Three hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars for professional services and twenty thousand for legal services. We know this project is eligible for loan and a grant from the state of Connecticut in the EPA. All right, any further discussion before this, okay, without very much, all can say aye, aye? And seeing the opposition motion carries, okay? Wow, I think we're at, uh. We're here, we're at the annual presentation. Um, and just so everybody stands up, this is, this is also a requirement of our charter. That the academic development commission actually presents in writing to us. So the presentation can be as long or real as you want, but it's supposed to happen near April fifteenth of every year, this is why we're here.
So I. Marion asked for a presentation that she can bring up, I also made copies of a few of those, it was a. A gluttonous phone, so, um, I'll give you, if you want to try to bring it up. So what I provided for you was a, um, written report and then I also did a presentation. Break it down, so I'd still agree to read the report in. So, um, so this is basically twenty twenty-four, so this is an overview of, uh, twenty twenty-four, um, and. What I summarized was, uh, key economic indicators, including employment trends. Business growth, commercial real estate activity and some of the strategic development initiatives that we did. Um, the first area that, um, I provided information was unemployment and workforce. Um, so in two thousand twenty-four, uh, we averaged about a three zero. Four, uh, zero four percent average employment rate. Um, if you look at the, you'll see in the, um, larger document that I gave you, but I break it down. Um, by months, so you can kind of see the trends and where we were and kind of where we are now. But on average throughout two, two thousand twenty-four, we're at a three point zero four unemployment rate, so. But that doesn't, it really shows a strong employment in two thousand twenty-four and a stable and healthy labor market. Um, what it also shows is that we outpaced, um, the state of Connecticut, which was at a three point three percent. And our Danbury, LNA, which is like eleven towns in that region, um, and they were at a three point one two percent. So like I said, all that information is available for, for you. Um, our top employment sectors were accommodations and food service at ninety-seven percent, healthcare thirty-six percent, menu transfer twenty percent. And retail at twenty-five percent. Some of the workforce development initiatives that we did in two thousand twenty-four were, we partnered with Bethel, um, High School for job shadowing. Um, they had hired somebody, um, last year to take on college and career placement. So I've been working with that individual to connect students with job shadowing opportunities with our local businesses. Um, we also had a business advisory council where we created internships with local businesses. As well as developed career pathways that linked into those businesses, so for example, like healthcare pathway. That linked up to new bonds and internships with new bonds, so kids would go through this pathway program. And it would end with internships and career opportunities for them. Um, we have a, um, social media presence that's specifically about workforce and jobs. Um, that, uh, that we post on to connect, um, employees or possible employees with employers in the town. And we collaborate with, um, the North Region, Northwest Regional, this is always hard to read, say. Northwest Regional Workforce Investment Board to expand job opportunities, so they have grant programs for employers. Um, they also have two separate partnerships that I'm working closely with around manufacturing and healthcare to connect those businesses. Locally here with workforce opportunities and training opportunities, so through the Northwest Regional Workforce Investment Board. Um, well, the next, um, area is local business growth, so. I can talk over a lot of things that I can't talk over. Um, and we have a diversity of small, medium-sized businesses as well as established and startup businesses. In two thousand twenty-four, we had two hundred and nine K new business reg- registrations, and if you look back at the report. They go back a few, few years, you'll see that there's an upward trend that the new business registrations in, in Bethel are increasing from year to year. What these two numbers show, the number of businesses and the business registrations, is that in two thousand twenty-four, we really had thriving business, um, community. And I outlined some of the, um, the highlights of new businesses, um, in two thousand twenty-four, which you can see there as well. Business support initiatives, um, we do have a business visitation program, so in two thousand twenty-four, I made a hundred and thirty business visits. And assisted two hundred and thirty-eight businesses, whether in location, financing. Um, any type of assistance, permitting assistance, financial assistance, with linking businesses to financial or business resources. Um, I'm very active in local and regional organizations, I'm on the chief of commerce board. I'm the chair of Bethel Arts, I'm on the Art Board. Um, I'm on the huge, huge, sonic industrial development board, so, um, I'm also a fans Connecticut partner. As well as on a West Coast, uh, working economic development committee. Um, which we do, uh, quarterly to talk about economic development, both within the region and hopefully. Um, downtown revitalization, um, we were accepted in the program in two thousand twenty-four and we're coming to the end of that. Um, through Connecticut Main Street and its Connecticut Main Street Accelerator Program. And that provides resources around a specific project that helps downtown revitalization. Um, and if we get through the process successfully, they could also provide grant opportunities towards that project, so. That project should be ending, um, at the end of June, um, and hopefully we'll have some more information. Um, and part of that is really the project that we're looking at is creating a downtown website where there's a social media presence. So we're going to experience Bethel and experience in Bethel, um, so I'll. Provide more information around that as soon as we kind of get to, get to that point. Um, business education events, um, we had, you know, a few educational events, which we chartered over a hundred and fifty. Um, attendees and businesses into the area and we claim quarterly, quarterly benefit grants. Um, commercial real estate trends in two thousand, um, twenty-four, we had about an average of ninety. Twenty-seven percent occupancy, um, we were showing a high demand for commercial, um. Locations, um, and also we had very tight inventory, so we have really high demand, but not a lot of placements to, to meet that demand. Uh, we had thirty-seven, thirty-nine point seven million dollars in commercial property sales. And what that shows is there's a lot of investor confidence in Bethel and I outlined some of the, um. Some of the, the top five, um, in your, in your report, there's a whole list of all the, uh, of. The commercial property sales that happened in two thousand four, this just kind of highlights some of the, the top ones. We also had a hundred, over a hundred fifty thousand spare seat of new commercial development. Allowing us to attract new employers and increasing our commercial tax base. I outlined forty-two again in the report, it shows, like, um, everything that makes up that hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Park Business Park, which we've talked about a lot, so I'm not going to go into it a lot, but. We were able to bring in four new businesses complaining for a million net revenue and over one million, um, in net profit. Um, that was, you know, virtually funded through state grants, that project had come over budget. It's kind of providing new tax revenue and shell creation. So some of the highlights for two thousand twenty-four, uh, we completed a marketing and legal study. Um, we completed a townwide marketing study. We were awarded a four point five million dollars, sixteen grand. And we were accepted into the Main Street Accelerator Program. Um, looking ahead, looking ahead, um, we're putting out the traction, retention, expansion. Especially in response to the factoring, it's going to see containers being packed, it's going to be working facilities. Focusing on workforce development, expanding our lending efforts, advancing downtown revitalization. Transportation, commercial real estate land and development opportunities and leveraging brands. Um, and like I said, this, the other document really goes into the nuts and bolts of this, but, um. That's really kind of a, a real quick highlight in terms of where we are in two thousand twenty-four. What we did in two thousand twenty-five, so.
Yes, in terms of like industrial land, like. All parts, you know, how much we have left in Bethel, it's pretty much all, all built on.
Yes, so there's very few industrial. Really no industrial land, I didn't think of that, um, there may be little cutouts in Park Park. And a little on the brush here, but outside of that, there's really not a lot of industrial, like, true industrial land. But I can get those numbers, I just don't have them, I can give you the commercial property.
Or talk, you open industrial.
Okay, yeah, yes. Yeah, I think our biggest opportunity industrial is redevelopment, if you look at like one eighty-five grassy plain. Um, you know, that was a sixty thousand square foot building, um, so which they totally redid all that. They're building another eighteen thousand square feet and then they're working out to another development as well, so that was ten acres, that was. Underutilized and they're, they're redeveloping that property.
That's at the start of Trowbridge, right?
Yeah, uh, that's, that's when you first go into where the party building, that's the birdie building, the old birdie building. Rizzo, Rizzo. So I could say maximizing those industrial properties that, that we have. There, when we looked at Trowbridge, there was some additional expansion we could do. Um, but there was a workforce that was kind of coming through there, so the return on investment at the time wasn't worth it, but. It could be something that's, that in the future.
I appreciate everything you do for the time of business, for sure. You're very good job.
I'll say, thank you, really, actually, it's, it did it perfectly, in the sense to giving us a bite-sized presentation in the report.
Very good, our rating and floors.
Okay, so, uh, next up. Uh, consideration of approval in ad hoc committees for America two fifty, Connecticut, which will be celebrating two hundred fiftieth anniversary of signing the declaration. This is kind of a thing that's been kind of been kicking around, we've been approached from, uh, a number of different organizations. Was it, yeah, the American Revolution people, war raid actors, the state of Connecticut was putting together one now. One thing I don't understand is if it's funded still. I've, I've heard that it may not be funded. What are you hearing?
Um, I'm hearing.
It won't be funded. So the question is, do we, do we move along and do our own thing? And go ahead. We have people who are interested in town doing something for the two hundred and fiftieth and celebrating Bethel and its place in the Revolutionary War and all that. Um, I, I have a couple of people who are interested. You know, and, and hopefully co-chairing it. I don't know how many members, but we have like maybe four or five people so far. So what, you know, what are your thoughts on putting some together?
You wanna do it?
Okay. Maybe we'll have like a, just a event next summer. You know, on a Friday or Saturday and just, you know, Bethel Day or something like that. Okay. Um. So I guess with um, not only with, we're doing an ad hoc committee like this, just ad hoc. Do we have to set out anything about, we'll just say a five-member committee, minority rules, why? We even have to do minority rules? So it's ad hoc? Did you do? Okay. All commissions are that way.
Well, so you have to like force there to be Republicans and Democrats on it?
Might have to because of anytime we form a, a committee.
But this is not political.
Yeah.
He doesn't really matter.
Well, so what's, but what's the difference between an ad hoc committee and a committee day? Because we've done, you know, in the past, we've done ad hoc committees. They call it ad hoc, but they still follow minority representation.
What's gonna happen if?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Five Democrats want to do it and no Republicans are fine. Yeah, I don't, just doesn't make sense.
When they made sustainable, it was way out of whack. With parties. They just did.
Do you even have to? We couldn't get involved. A bunch of people.
So, so what do you say? We go out on a limb here. We, we form it. If there's a problem, we'll come back and visit at the next meeting.
We're still having fun about it.
But, but no, I, I, I move that we.
You have to form a committee or?
I move that we have formed an ad hoc committee um, for America two fifty Connecticut to celebrate two hundred and fifty anniversary. Um, we'll have a, uh, we'll start with a seven-member committee and we'll work with town on, town attorney. And what?
Maybe put out all the town chairs, but.
Yeah.
A lot of people might be interested.
Okay. My second?
Second.
All favor? Aye. Motion carries. Uh, last up. Uh, in the, in the course of months, we talked about a flag raising uh, request. If you want to add this to the agenda for. That was a special.
Is that okay?
Yeah. Yes. So um, uh, I move that we add discussion of the Bethel Connecticut Pride flag raising to the agenda.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So it's on the agenda. Um, this, you know, it comes up once in a while because we don't have a flag policy. This is the first time I think we've been, it's come to the board of selectmen. Like it's always, I think, come to the first selectman over the years and, and we got a letter to the board. So it's probably important way in. Um, I've also had a lot of um, uh, discussion with some of the veterans groups who their big thing is making sure that the POW MIA flag is always flying out there. So in the past, I've always done that too, being a veteran. I've taken that and I put it below the American flag as a, you know, place of respect, never taking it down. The real question is, you know, is this something we want to do a policy? Do we want to? You just say what we'll do this one around and let them fly it and then look at a policy the fall or on Veterans Day. But what we, what, what's our thoughts as a group?
Uh, are they? In their letter, were they, are they looking for the whole month or just?
Yeah, they've asked for the day and if possible, the month of June. I would lean towards doing it for the month of June because that's what we've done. And then if we want to consider a more expansive flag thing down the line. Because you know what? Some people have talked about just doing this on PT Barnham Square and always flying the municipal and state flags up front. But I think, I think given where we are now, you know, letting do this month of June and having, you know, a hearing and a more elaborate thing down the line, maybe in the fall. We just go with it. But I'll take, I'll leave, take leave for you guys too. How do you feel?
I don't.
Yeah. And maybe revisit.
This done, it's been done before.
Sure. And then we'll revisit the fall or something. I know we have.
And then to, to look at a, a policy in the two period.
Okay. What are your thoughts? I mean, same thing. Okay. Okay. Um, okay. So um, I, I move that we uh, let uh, Bethel Connecticut Pride raid, do a flag raising on May thirty-first and fly the flag in the month of June. Any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
In both, motion carries. Perfect. For that, I believe that's it.
Eric, you may not.
Is this something?
Mention of Colonial Drive, train issues.
Oh, that's right. Because we, I wanted to put that in my report and I did not. Uh, actually, okay, just so everybody kind of has a heads up. So uh, back to my report real quick. Um, we lost, we also lost some feeble funding for brick brands and things like that to do some of the engineering studies. Uh, McCower was number one on the list, which we're doing because we're getting money back reimbursement. Second was a colonial drive Benedict area uh, to do an engineering study because we know downstream there's several challenges. It's twenty thousand bucks. I'm not, I wasn't gonna bring it forth now, but I wanted you guys to understand. I'm probably gonna bring it next meeting. We're out of budget money um, in the contracted services portion. So we'd be asking to come from capital not occurring. So just think about it. Um, you know, we could talk about it um, you know, at the next meeting, but I wanted you to know it's coming. Because we've run out of money for some of those projects, but we do have to look at getting them done. Do you want to add some of that?
Well, the only thing I would say is just to look at it. And I, I think it's important saying, to look at it in context. We had this flood on August eighteen.
Now.
It hit a lot of other towns worse, Oxford, South. But we had a lot of complaints. I obviously got a ton of things that Dan asked us to do after that was to really kind of look at whether the hotspots around town for drainage. McCower was an emergency repair. It's a little different, but the rest of it on the list. Colonial Drive came up as like the number one, but I do think that is important to to realize that there are a lot of people in town who are, have to deal with drainage issues and think that it's really for you guys to decide is.
So the next meeting, we'll, maybe we'll have a full discussion of all the drainage.
Yeah, yeah.
I know we wanted to kind of just.
I just want to say that it's harder. That's all. That's all.
Okay, fair enough. The, the other thing I, I didn't add, and then I have to move along. Actually, I've got a call coming that's important, I think. Um, we are going to be changing our healthcare company. Um, we're gonna be leaving the Connecticut partnership. Um, they gave us a ten point eight percent increase. Uh, and we have uh, looked at going to self-insurance. Probably not the time, looking at the numbers, but in that look, we found a very, very attractive offer from United. Um, so I don't want to go in the numbers here because we're still trying to negotiate some of the, the broker fees and stuff, but I can say it's very, very good for the town. Very, very good for the employees. It saves them some money uh, all the way around. So I'll report more as we get a little closer. But uh, yeah, it's good stuff. Just wanted to put that in my report. I totally forgot.
Can you just put, uh, if there was one, I am, I. But I spoke to John Gallow three hours ago. I know it was like urgency. I thought Miguel asked that to be on the, the agenda for the next meeting.
Do we need to do that now? Can we wait?
I, I think we can wait for the next meeting.
All right. So we have motion on the floor. We have a second. We have a motion to adjourn here. Second. Like, but once going twice, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you guys.